Yeah, it's pretty short. So before we begin tonight's regular session, we will have the swearing in of our newest councillor, Will Anderson, and the rest of us will vacate back here so not to be in the picture.
All right, good evening. Can I have you raise your right hand?
Yep.
And repeat after me. "I, Will Anderson..."
"I, Will Anderson..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon..."
"...that I will support and..."
"...support the Constitution..."
"...support the Constitution of Oregon..."
"...and laws of Oregon." "...the charter and ordinances of the city of Milwaukee..."
"...the charter and ordinances of the city of Milwaukee."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties..."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties..."
"...of city councillor..."
"...of city councillor."
"...of the city of Milwaukee..."
"...of the city of Milwaukee."
"...in the county of Clackamas."
"...in the county of Clackamas."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"...according to the best of my ability."
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, well, welcome aboard councillor Anderson. And I call the 2,405th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card on the table for those here in City Hall or by emailing ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. "Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión." Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, etc. Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then we have our weekly announcements. Join the North Clackamas Watershed Council for a guided tour of the Kellogg Creek Restoration and Community Enhancement Project Site tomorrow from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. This is better known as the Dam, the Kellogg Dam. Participants will meet at Milwaukee Bay Park, where Kellogg Dam is visible. Tour guides will talk about the dam's history and the many benefits for wildlife and people that are expected once it is removed. Acting City Manager Emma Segor is hosting another open-door session on Friday, June 28, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at City Hall here in the council chambers. Please feel free to stop by to ask questions, raise concerns, or just find out more about what the city is doing. No sign up is necessary. Join a community-led festive gathering to celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride Month on Saturday, June 29, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, I think. This is 2:00 p.m., but I'm pretty sure it's noon, in the South Downtown Plaza, which is the south end of Main Street by southeast Washington. And save the date for the next first Friday on July 5, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Also, the Milwaukee Arts Committee is hosting the fifth annual Porch Fest on the last three Fridays in July. Porch Fest is a free festival of performances on porches, driveways, and public spaces across Milwaukee. People are encouraged to walk or bike their neighborhoods, meet their neighbors, and share their talents with the community. If you are interested in performing or hosting a performance or volunteering to help, visit milwaukieporchfest.com to learn more and sign up. Enjoy waterfront views while dancing to your favorite Tom Petty hits on Saturday, July 13, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Milwaukee Bay Park. Petty Fever, an award-winning full-production tribute band, will take the stage and transport you back in time. Food and beverages will be available for purchase at the event. Come early at 5:30 p.m. for Duck Races Over Kellogg Dam, brought to you by the Milwaukee Parks Foundation and the North Clackamas Watersheds Council. The music begins at 6:00 p.m. And I should say, if you want to sponsor a duck and the chance to win, I think there are some people will be selling tickets out in front of the farmer's market this weekend. For more information about each of these events, please visit the city's homepage at milwaukeeoregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. And then I have a haiku, which, because I got no submissions, is my haiku, but I do encourage other people to submit. So this one reads, "School's Out for Summer: Sunscreen, Splashing, Tunes, Hijinks. We Are So Ready." I did want to put out a little bit of a challenge. So we don't have a meeting at the beginning of July. We canceled that meeting because of the Fourth of July holiday. So our next meeting, where we would read a haiku, is not until sort of the middle of July. And so I wanted to put a challenge out there to the Milwaukee Arts Committee because that's when Porch Fest will be gearing up. And I would like to see them submit some Porch Fest-themed haikus, whether individually or collectively as a group. So that's my challenge to the Arts Committee. And I will not just take the chance that they might see this. I will email the chair. Okay, with that, I think that's the end of announcements.
Can I add one quick announcement?
Yep.
Just to remind folks that 2024 is an election year. And this fall, there will be two city council positions on the ballot, positions one and three. The filing window in the city will open July 29. And the election information has been posted online under Milwaukee City Council Elections. So any questions, let me know. But just heads up for anyone interested in running for city council.
Thank you for that. And we have no proclamations tonight. That's unusual. Community comments. I do know we have a couple of community comments. So this is a part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business that is not already on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up from the June 4 community comments, Acting City Manager Segor?
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. At our last meeting, we had several members of APSME Local 355 testify. We appreciate them coming and sharing their thoughts because we are still bargaining the labor contract. We won't be providing comment at this time, but we appreciate them taking the time to share their feedback. We also had a comment at the last meeting from Rod Smith, a Milwaukee resident, asking and providing some feedback about maintenance of trees. I just want to thank Rod, who I think is in the audience, for meeting with me today. We had a great conversation today about opportunities for continued coordination and collaboration moving forward. Thank you, Rod.
All right, thank you. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card. I have a couple of them. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak. And when instructed to begin, click the microphone option to unmute yourself. If you are phoning in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial *9 to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your comment information to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion, but the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. So I have Terrell Garrett. Yep, come there and press the little button, lift the mic up so that it's in front of you. There you go.
Mayor and council, good evening. My name is Terrell Garrett, and I'm a Milwaukee wannabe. I live in Oak Grove. So I do have a daughter that lives over on Harvey. Anyways, a few weeks ago, I had one of my people contact you, the mayor, regarding concerns I have about a big demolition project and construction, demolition, waste recycling in general in the city of Milwaukee. I was referred to city manager. And I was not happy with the response I received. Pretty much, the response was, "Thank you for pointing out the problems with our system. We'll think about it down the road." The Milwaukee Code effectively directs construction, demolition, dropbox, commercial waste to Metro South. In the metro system, we have recovery rates ranging from 4% to 51%. Metro South, the recovery rate is 4%. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. I own Greenway Recycling in northwest Portland, COVID Minority Business Enterprise certified, Construction, Demolition, Recycling Association, National Recycler of the Year this year. 51% recovery rate. I receive zero waste from Milwaukee. Milwaukee has platitudes about equity. It has platitudes about our environment. 4% is not taking care of our environment. And Metro South is not providing equity. I ask that you, the council, direct your city manager to look into this. And let's have a real conversation about taking care of our planet and getting equity into city services. Thank you very much for your time. Greenway Recycling, greenway.net.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. And David and Dean, it's on.
Dean, if you want to say hi. I can say hi.
Hi.
Hi, Dean.
All right, here. Just pull this up. All right, can everyone hear me? Perfect, all right. Thank you, everyone. I'll try to make this as short as I can. I'm actually very grateful of the full crowd here today. I see Assembly Member Bauman, is that right? Senator, Representative. I knew it was close. Bauman, and I see Commissioner West is here as well. So this is great. We get to talk about this with some outside-of-Milwaukee people as well. That's exciting. So I'm here to talk about the issue that I've been presenting to y'all since, I think, early February of this year, which is the ongoing genocide that's been happening in Gaza right now. You mentioned there's no proclamations today. There could have been. We really could have had a proclamation in favor of the Palestinian people. I bring up that I've been bringing this up since February 17 because since then, 123% of the population of Milwaukee has been killed and/or injured in Gaza and the West Bank by the Israeli forces and the IDF. I am a Middle Eastern American. I'm really hurting with all of this stuff. I don't like seeing videos of babies with decapitated heads. I don't like seeing videos of babies that are starved. I don't like seeing a horrible video of this boy that was... His brother was in a body bag, and he was protecting his head from the sun because he didn't want him to get sunburned. I am so tired of seeing these. And I know, you guys aren't attacking Palestine. I hope not. I don't know. But I hope not. But we are part of America. This is something that America has a lot of influence in. We are, I think, the largest supplier of aid to Israel. A lot of cities around the U.S., counties. I know Multnomah County. I believe councillor Stephen George helped draft and/or drafted the Multnomah County proposal, which I think was pretty good. And I think it would be a great activity for Milwaukee to step up and do that. And again, I've been bringing this up since February. Apparently, the stats on dead people aren't getting to everyone, so I'm going to bring up... If people can see my shirt, this is Raul Wallenberg. Does anyone on the council, by chance, know who Raul Wallenberg is? You do? Perfect, great. So Raul Wallenberg is probably credited for saving 100,000 lives during... 100,000 lives during the Holocaust. He straight up did illegal shit. He... Sorry. He did everything he could in Budapest to help rescue as many Jewish people as possible. And part of the reason he felt so strongly about this was he lived in Palestine and was a banker in Palestine and noticed the mistreatment that the Jewish people were seeing. And he did everything that he could to help rescue these people. He's not Jewish. He didn't have an immediate connection. He's not Palestinian. He was a Swedish guy. And he saved 100,000 lives in the Holocaust through his experience. And he did it because he was a humanitarian, and he cared about others. And I... I don't know how to keep saying, like, genocide is bad. I wrote it in my notes here. Genocide equals bad. But I've been hurting. I've been telling you guys that I've been hurting. And not one city counselor has checked in on me regarding this, except for Counselor Chushar Badi. Thank you for that. This is a real bummer. I spent two and a half hours with Mayor Beatty last weekend at the volunteer booth at the farmer's market, and it was never brought up. Why, yeah. My son said croissants, because that's his favorite part of the farmer's market. I'm really grateful to have my son. I just want to mention that. And there's a lot... There are 17,000 children in Palestine who are orphans now because of what the IDF has done. I know it's not a direct action that we're taking. We're not cutting off Israel here. But we take these stands. Movement grows. More people can stand up and say genocide is bad. It's bad. The civil rights movement wasn't just like, boom, your rights are civil. It was people standing up, being really, really aggressive in their form against hatred and injustice. Same with the gay rights movement. Same with any of this, anything. Vietnam War, you name it. I'm here on behalf of the Middle Eastern community, the humanitarian community. Genocide's bad. You guys have made so many proclamations. We made a Christmas ship proclamation. Now, if a proclamation is just a word, and it doesn't really matter, it's a virtue signal, whatever, just say that. Be clear that you're not willing to do a proclamation. I'll also mention that one of my good family friends is a professor of global studies at PSU. And her and I would be happy to present on Palestine to y'all. It is a very, very important issue. There are so many people that are hurting right now. And Milwaukee stepped up in a lot of ways on a lot of things. I literally based this proclamation that I did based on Mayor Beatty's proclamation to the Ukraine war, 20 days into the war. I literally cut and pasted out, like, Ukraine, and put in Palestine, because it's that similar. When a place is oppressing another place, it's usually a pretty standard thing. So what's different about Ukraine versus Palestine? I will also end with one more statement. I know I am well over my time, which is that, again, if you guys don't want to do anything, don't stress about it. In 1938, after Kristallnacht, 70% of Americans didn't want Jewish people in America. So you'd be in happy company in that majority. I'm obviously being sarcastic here, but it's a really important issue. Genocide is bad. I hope our leaders will do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, do we have any folks online who want to speak?
No emails and no answers.
Okay. All right. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council May 14th, 2024 study session, a resolution certifying the results of the May 21st, 2024 election, a resolution removing Ashley Lookenhouse and appointing Olivia Padilla to the Tree Board, a resolution appointing Jeff Landry to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, a resolution adopting revisions to the Neighborhood Grant Program, including a new title and criteria for approval, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase order not to exceed $1 million with PetroCard to provide card lock and fuel services, a resolution authorizing increased contingency for contract number C24... Or 2024-003 for Paul Brothers, Inc. for Scott, Bowman Bray, and Valfor Park projects, a resolution authorizing an administrative services agreement with Mission Square for the administration and record-keeping of employee deferred compensation accounts. Does any member of council wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. It passes unanimously. I'm going to assume Counselor Stevan Jordan said aye, since she didn't say no. All right. And the really only item of business, because we have some executive sessions later, but is the election of the council president. And I will say that serving as the council president is usually a two-year gig. Usually, you're... Because every two years, we elect new city councilors. And then, under our charter, in the January after that election, we do the election of a council president from among the councilors. But because Council President Nicodemus resigned midterm, Counselor Massey has been serving as our interim council president. We'll elect a council president today, and we will elect again in January after the fall elections. So it's... Anyway, that's just the way the cookie crumbles. So any nominations out there?
He did so good with the past few months. I would be happy to re-nominate interim council president Massey to serve as our council president now.
Oh, and I see Counselor Stevan Jordan also has her hand up. Thank you for that nomination, Counselor.
Since that was also my nomination, I'll just second.
Okay.
Or third.
Well, this is going to be easy then, okay. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Robert Massey to serve as council president and take the interim from out in front of his name. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard?
I'm staying.
Yeah.
Okay, well, fair enough. Okay. Like, make any remarks upon your...
We're going to stay the course.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, guys, for coming today. We don't usually have this many people for often much longer meetings. You left out and had a short meeting today. After the regular session, council will meet an executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute 192662D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and to A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives of the news media and all designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Well, we're going to get up and leave the room, so you don't have to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session.
Mayor, I did just want to know, we did have on the agenda council reports as section nine.
Did I jump over those? I did. Sorry. Okay. Well, hold that thought about those executive sessions. Council reports. Anybody have any reports on meetings? This is typically where we report on meetings we attended or other things that we want to share with the other members of council and the general public.
If it's okay, I'd just like to start by thanking my family and friends, mentors who came today. I really appreciate it. I wouldn't be here without you. And a big thank you. I gave to all my fellow councilors and folks on the dais a little gift to start out my time here. Our good council president has already opened his card, a big faux pas. But I will forgive him for that.
How did I?
Yeah, okay, okay. But I will spoil what it is if you want to open up the scroll. I got you copies that were not delivered of Fire at Eden's Gate, a book about Tom McCall and his legacy as governor. And I give this to you to put a marker down about our land use system here in Milwaukee and our land use system statewide. We have one of the best land use systems in the state. At the same time, we have some real challenges as a region and as a state about housing affordability. And I think it's something that we've talked a lot about here. And it's something that I think we're empowered here at the local level to be uniquely positioned to solve. So I say that as a, let's get started. We have some exciting work to do. The one other thing that I wanted to say in my council reports, this morning, I had the pleasure of going with Counselor Chushar Badi to the ONA picket line to be able to strike with nurses who are protesting conditions in hospitals, especially in light of nurse staffing ratio bill that was passed in the legislature last session and the failure of Providence, Milwaukee and other Providence hospitals to comply with those nurse staffing ratios. I would love to... I think Counselor Chushar Badi might be interested in seconding this, putting something on the agenda on the July 16th meeting to consider some type of resolution. I'd have our own tour with Providence, Milwaukee to talk a little bit about those nurse staffing ratios. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council reports?
Not yet. I will. I had some really good information on... At the CAP, we did a tour of Klakko Kids, Klakamis County Children's Commission.